All right, if we can call this meeting to order. Ask you all to rise and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first up is the former selectman, is Sherri Stenick, and our friend for today.
This is our pet of the week. His name is Scruffy. He's 12 months old. He's at 211 One-Rod Highway. For $50, he comes with a certificate towards neutering, and he's really friendly. And right now, very gentle. He sits. If he's going to listen to me, let's say he sits. He's housebroken, friendly, and a little scared of kids. But other than that, he's a perfect pet. Haven't tried him with a cat, but he did meet a new dog today, and he was wagging his tail and seemed very pleased to meet him. So.
All right. Any phone numbers or addresses or anything else we need to know?
211 One-Rod Highway, Animal Control in Fairfield, and I think what else? Where can you see him on the website?
Yeah, petfinder.com.
Petfinder.com. He's there with all of his friends.
And the phone number there if somebody wanted to call ahead?
254-4857.
203-254-4857?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, go Scruffy. All right. All right, next up, we have a special presentation. Certificates of honor to the Fairfield Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, for receiving the 2011-2012 Connecticut Citizen Corps Council CERT Unit Citation Award, and Fairfield CERT President Cindy O'Neil Vitale for receiving the CERT Merit Award. Congratulations, guys. Cindy, if you could come up first, we have a...
Cindy can't be here, so she has me standing for her.
Okay. Well, Norma, come on up, and we will... This certification from the town of Fairfield. Congratulations, Cindy O'Neil Vitale, Fairfield CERT President, on being chosen as the recipient of the 2011-2012 Connecticut Citizen Corps Council CERT Merit Award for your exemplary community service pertaining to the CERT mission and following all CERT guidelines. Fantastic. And just for the record, actually, I'll come back to this in just a minute. You guys are phenomenal, but I'll do it as closing. So congratulations, Cindy Stenick. In addition, we have a certification for the entire team. Congratulations Fairfield Community Emergency Response Team, CERT... I kept thinking of the breath mess when I was saying... ...on being chosen as the recipient of the 2011-2012 Connecticut Citizen Corps Council CERT Unit Citation Award for your outstanding contribution to the town of Fairfield and to neighboring communities during Tropical Storm Irene and Winter Storm Alfred. Congratulations, guys. I got to say that, you know, I was...I guess I'm still a rookie, but I was very much a rookie when I got to see you guys in action. And I know all the training of that. I've read about that over time and the different trials and things we've done to prepare you. But it was so great to see you guys in action. I can't tell you how smoothly it went. I couldn't tell. We didn't do those every week. You guys are phenomenal. To be recognized by the entire state of Connecticut for the work that you do, it makes not only me feel good, or us feel good, but I think every citizen in town ought to feel good knowing that you're not only out there representing, you're not just volunteering. You're very good at what you do, and you take time to do that. And I know you put in tons of hours because I saw that firsthand. So thank you very much for everything you're doing. President Norma.
On behalf of the CERT team, which is now over 60 strong and graduating a new class that will be over 70 soon, thank you very much. And also on behalf of Cindy, I also wanted to point out and recognize the Health Department and the Medical Reserve Corps who partnered with us with the sheltering. They were outstanding, and we couldn't have done it without them, and it's much appreciated. And along that line, we have...I wanted to present two things. First, selectmen tetro, this is the State Citizen Corps Council pin.
Oh, thank you.
And this is actually the unit citation that the CERT team received.
Wow.
And I wanted to present it to you, to the town, in hopes that you will find a place to...
We'll find a very appropriate place.
And I hope the Medical Reserve Corps uses this as their recognition as well. So, there you go.
Thank you. Now, you just started a new class. How many students are in it?
Fourteen.
Fourteen more?
Fourteen more.
Now, that's going to bring the entire CERT population up to...
Over 70.
Wow.
Yep.
That's tremendous. How many CERT teams are there in all of Connecticut?
I can't tell you, but I think we have over 3,000 CERT members in Connecticut.
That makes that recognition even more valuable, considering the number of folks you compare to. So congratulations again.
Thank you.
Tremendous. Thank you. The minutes. To consider an act upon the minutes of regular meeting February 15, 2012. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. To consider an act upon the minutes of combined Board of Selectment meeting, Board of Finance, Public Hearing, Board of Selectmen, Special Meeting, February 28. Have a motion?
No, actually. Well, for discussion purposes?
Okay.
Yes, for discussion.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, would like to postpone voting. These were not on the town website, and that would also apply for item number three as well. Would like to postpone.
All right, is that a motion?
Yep, move to postpone.
All right, I'll second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jen, you got those two postponed?
Mm-hmm.
All right. To consider an act upon the minutes of regular meeting, March 7. So moved?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
You know what? Forgive me, is this the March 7?
March 7.
Yes. I do have discussion in the March 7. My apologies. Actually, you know what? I think I got it backwards.
There it is.
No, I'm good.
All right.
Yep.
Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Combined Board of Selectment meeting, is that the one? Consider an act upon the minutes of combined Board of Selectment meeting, March 8. Can I have a motion?
Yep, so moved.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. To consider an act upon the minutes of Special Meeting, March 14.
For discussion purposes.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Yep, so moved.
Second. All right. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a couple of amendments. On page one of the March 14 minutes, the Parks and Recreation Commission appointment, there is no motion and no vote recorded on there, so I move that we amend. And look to Ms. Carpenter for the specifics on...
Do you want to...why don't we postpone that and have it corrected when it comes back to us?
Okay.
Would that be okay?
Sure. I have a couple other minor...
Okay.
Would you prefer that I...
Why don't you point those out, and then we'll postpone, so Jen has the record of all of those.
Great. The second amendment is in the Land Acquisition Commission discussion. And in the paragraph that begins, "First, selectmen tetro ask what $1,000 covers." To strike was appropriated by the Board of Finance, so it's already in the conservation budget to strike that and say the money is available in the conservation budget. It makes it sound like there was already a vote approving that, which there has not been. And similarly, in the sentence that said Mr. Stenick has said conservation...excuse me, Selectman McCarthy-Vey, he asked Mr. Stenick to compare this property to other properties that have no use to replace that with...that are similar small parcels. And that's it.
All right, Jen, do you have those?
And is there anything in paragraph one?
Um, no, actually.
Oh, thank you. Terrific. Thank you.
Is there a motion postponed?
So moved.
Okay, I'll second. A postponement to a date certain of the next regularly scheduled Board of Selectment meeting? Any discussion on the postponement? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. That's done. All right, next up. To here consider an act upon the following resolution. Resolved that the town of Fairfield enter into a one-year extension of the contract for management of the yard waste facility with Green Cycle Connecticut, Inc. This is from Department of Public Works. Rich, or Twig, did you want to say something? And Ms. Stenick, I know you're...I'm not quite sure why you're here. If you're waiting just for the appointment, I would suggest that this discussion may go on for a while. You're welcome to stay, but I think the board knows you pretty well, so...
Thank you. I'll stay just a few minutes and listen, and then if I want to leave, thank you.
Okay. All right. Sorry, Twig.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Twig Holland. I'm Director of Purchasing for the town of Fairfield. And I'm joined today by Richard White and Ed Bowman, who are the Director and Assistant Director of the Public Works. And, Rich, if I could just...one administrative point before you go any further. The full motion reads, "To here consider an act upon the following resolution. Resolved that the town of Fairfield enter into a one-year extension of the contract for management of the yard waste facility with Green Cycle of Connecticut, Inc." Can I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second. Now to discussion.
Okay, thank you. What we'd like to do today is present some information and get your...hopefully get your approval to extend the existing contract with Green Cycle to manage the yard waste and the compost facility down at One-Rod Highway. Green Cycle currently has the contract...or has the contract that expired on December 31 of 2011. They were the best bidder for a contract done...for a bid done previously. And to just give you a little bit of background, the yard waste contract is...in very brief detail entails residents and the town being able to take yard waste, organic material, leaves, grass clippings, small logs and sticks and so forth to the town facility. It's managed by Green Cycle. It's ground, it's composted, and the town is then able to get yard...get the processed material for use on town properties, and residents are able to get the processed material for use on their private homes at no cost to them. So they can deliver it with certain restrictions. I think it's a carload at a time. So they're able to deliver their waste, yard waste, and then come back and pick it up in a processed form, all at no charge.
Gentlemen, if I could ask you to keep it down a bit back, please, while we're conducting our meeting. Sorry, Twig.
That's okay. Landscapers and contractors are able to take their yard waste and so forth to the same facility, pay a fee for dumping. And there is also a component where this contractor processes and markets the bio solids compost that's produced by the town's wastewater treatment facility. We're here today because we did a bid to...for a new contract, a new five-year contract prior to the expiration of the existing one, and pretty much everything went wrong with that bid...with that bid document. It's a service contract...it's a service agreement by an independent contractor, and so it requires Board of Selectmen approval for the five-year duration. And essentially, the bid document didn't clearly state some aspects of the work, and it required a lot of clarification. And simply put, we just didn't allow enough time to produce a clear, fully-vetted bid document that was concise and understandable by all potential bidders. There were a lot of questions. There was a lot...there were numerous requests for additional information, and we realized that extending the bid due date, while possible, would not allow adequate time to vet a new contractor, to bring the agreement to the Board of Selectmen all before the start of the busy season, which is roughly April 1. If you agree to extend the contract, preferably to December 31 of this year, it would allow purchasing and public works staff adequate time to produce a solid, fully-vetted document that would be of better quality than the one that we wrote previously. The timetable that I'd like to suggest, and Rich White will talk more about why we'd like this timetable, is that we publish the bid document around August or September, get bids in, and that would ensure that there is plenty of time to vet a contractor, to allow that contractor to have all their business plans that are required by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection in place, and start the new contract on January 1, 2013, and be ready to begin full operation April 1, 2013. And if Mr. White wants to discuss the timing?
Yeah, besides the time to put together a new bid and get out on the street like Ms. Holland mentioned, I just want to make a couple of points why it's advantageous for a smoother transfer from a new...from the old operator to a new operator. December, January, February, that period is a lot slower at the yard waste facility than any of the summer months, July, August, whatever. Most likely, the new operator will want to start off with a clean site. In other words, get rid of the existing material on the site, and so it's ready for the operations. And there are a couple reasons why that's important. Is the material that...and this is what happened last time when Ground Products handed over the site to the current operator, Green Cycle. Ground Products cleaned the site completely. And the reason why that's advantageous is the material that's on the site has already gone over the scale, and the current operator has received revenues for it. And if it's just sitting there, and the new operator comes in, he has to bear the cost of getting rid of that material. So it's cleaner for the original operator to...who got the revenue to get rid of it, one reason. I know they can exchange money, but it is cleaner. And the second thing is that, just in this business, it's not a good idea to just take ownership of piles of material, because you never know what's in them. So there is a liability that would make a new operator concerned about just taking over the site with piles of material that he didn't produce, et cetera. So those are a couple reasons. It'll take approximately two to three weeks. We estimate it takes approximately two to three weeks based on past experience for a new...for an existing operator to clean the site, and for the new operator to come in, set up his equipment, et cetera. And again, we'd like to see that done in the slower time of the year, the winter, versus sooner in the summertime. First, for not causing an inconvenience to the residents in their use of the facility. It's still heavily used in the July, August, September period, and that's backed up by...I was taking a look at the vehicle traffic. There is about 6,000 vehicles per month for those...for the past three July, August, and Septembers. This is compared to it dropping down significantly in December, January, and February to 2,300, 650, and 87. So it's 2,300, 650, 87 versus a 6,000-per-month pace. So a lot slower in the wintertime. So by closing down for a couple weeks in the wintertime, two to three weeks, it's less inconvenient to the public. Also, Public Works uses the facility, and it would be a lot less inconvenient to us to close it down in the wintertime when our activity's dropping off, material slows down a lot. The other major reason, besides shutdown period inconveniencing the general public, is it has to do with really the very strong potentials of generating odors when you start to move around this material. Again, going back to the scenario where the existing operator will have to dig into those piles with a front-end loader, load the material onto a truck. We know from painful experience that in the summertime, that can create significant odors. The material is really cooking in the warm weather versus the cold weather, and people are outside, obviously, more windows are open, et cetera. We know from experience that it's not a good idea to dig into those piles during the summertime. In the wintertime, it's colder, the biological activity is less, you get less odors, and again, people aren't outside to experience it. I just want to show you, and I apologize, our big printer isn't working, just to get an idea of the magnitude of how much material we're talking about that has to be cleaned up, this site before the new operator would come on. It's coming in from One-Rod Highway. All this material is in base at the contract of sales to the public. All this material on the right-hand side is compost material that is sitting there in different stages of aging or curing. And then over on the right-hand side is the material that is offered to the general public. But all back here is his working area, where at any given time, he has piles of material in different states of processing. So that's, again, my strong recommendation that we extend the contract to the wintertime so that we can avoid these problems that we would have in the summertime during the transfer.
Thank you. What's the current status of the contract?
The current contract ran until December 31, 2011, so it is officially expired.
Okay, so we're currently running without a contract. What's the working relationship with the company that's in it?
The staff's always for...
They just agreed to kind of honor the contract in the short term.
Can you just cover again a little more background as to what was the initial time expected? It sounded like this wouldn't have been quite covered by the end of the year. What was the original timing? How did we expect this to work, I guess, is what I'm trying to say?
The original timing...
And part of it, just to clarify, what I'm trying to get to is to avoid situations where we're kind of past the end date of a contract, where we're kind of still reviewing things. I'm trying to understand what happens so we can kind of look forward from this point.
The original...the bid was originally published on December 7. And the original bid due date was December 21. And that would have allowed adequate time for staff to review the responses, to vet the candidates, select a contractor, and bring the proposed agreement to the Board of Selectmen in January 2012.
Okay, which would have been just after it expired?
Yes.
Okay. So kind of the initial timing was a little bit of a problem to start with.
We...clearly, we didn't allow adequate time. It was a photo finish on the original bid.
And the issue on...that's the initial timing. The issue on the...just review again the key points, and the issue on why not just, say, wait another 30 days, 60 days, do the bid, process it with all the appropriate improvements in the bid docs, and then start it kind of mid-year? What were the top reasons for not doing it? Or not recommending? I guess, it's not that we haven't done it yet, that you're recommending we not do that.
Right, mid-year being end up in...
Anytime between now and 12/31. Like, why wouldn't we do it September 30th, or July 30th, or June 30th, or...
Okay, well, definitely, I'm familiar with the numbers, and I would stay away from the...I would recommend we stay away from the summer months, June, July, August, September, because there is still a fair amount of activity down there. Activity being both DPW bringing in material, the residents, which I gave you numbers on, bringing in materials, 6,000 vehicles a day, June, July, and August. And also, well, I don't have a handle on it, but I know it exists, a fair amount of landscapers who provide the service to residents are bringing in material. So in my ideal world, we would want to do that at the slowest time of the year, which again, is December, January, and February, in terms of inconveniencing the public, the lease, and DPW, frankly. And the other reason is because I've gone through it for quite a few years in the past, and we've had a considerable amount of complaints from that site before this current operator came in, and to the point where we educated him, "Don't touch those piles in terms of making major moves with them during the hot months," because, again, you're dealing with compost material that's in the different stages of maturing or aging. That's the reason why it's sitting there. It's basically curing, like tobacco. You've got ground-up mulch in large piles, which, again, can be cooking on the inside because it's composting. You've got the other materials there that we know from experience that...and he also has, like any operator, materials, you know, in different miscellaneous piles that might be sitting there for six or eight months that, you know, he had no reason to move. Once you cut into those, you release all the odors. The steam comes out, and the odors are released, plus the dust from it. And we know from past experience, when they just moved around one or two piles, that we really upset the neighbors with the odors and the dust complaint. And that's why I wouldn't recommend, you know, a person cleaning the site, which would mean taking every single one of those piles, loading with a front-end, or cutting into it, loading it into a front-end loader on a truck to get it out of there during the summertime.
Won't the dust and odor be an issue no matter when you do it?
No, well, it'll be always, but in the wintertime, it's a lot less, because, number one, the piles are cooler, so they're not cooking as much, not generating as much odor. It slows the biology down considerably. The second thing is, is just the nature of the beast, that summertime, windows open, people all doing activities, things like that. Dead of winter, you don't have...we don't have to worry about various ball field and, you know, the close proximity areas and people doing a barbecue and things like that. That's what we were getting the complaints on, when you'd open up a pile in the summertime, people say it would ruin their afternoon.
Most recent winter accepted.
Right.
Do you have issues with weather? What if there were three feet of snow on the ground? Does that kind of keep things from happening?
Not really. No, because he's...I mean, within reason. I mean, even two or three feet of the snow on the ground, he's plowing out his aisles, and he's just taking that material and, you know, throwing it into a truck, and the heat itself actually will melt the snow. But it's not a problem. I don't anticipate it.
Okay, so nothing magic about the 12/31 date, other than it's...from your standpoint, it's a low-volume kind of minimum impact?
Right. I'm making a strong...my personal strong recommendation, based on it's a slow period of time. I think for that reason, it'll be less inconvenient to the residents dropping off and landscapers in... I think for that reason it will be less inconvenient to the residents, dropping off and landscapers and DBW. And the second reason is that I just know from personal experience that cleaning a site, moving piles, it's a lot better to do it in the dead of winter than it is in the summer months.
All right. Thank you. Any questions before?
I have something. Rich, I hear you about the December, January, February timeframe, but there is no possible way with the management of this new contractor coming out that we were ever going to be able to do that. Because with an RFP coming out on December 7th, we're already in the slow month, first slow month. And if people started asking questions, this whole thing was going to be disrupted. We're basically in the middle of your slow period and you're now putting this RFP out. I mean, if we wanted to really manage this properly, I guess we should have put that RFP out around August. To give everybody, even the person who did, if they did not get it, the current person who was operating did not get the contract, they were going to have to move a ton of stuff off of the property. And I don't, what are we supposed to tell them on the 30th? You got to have everything off the site? I mean, we were going to require them to have everything off the site on December 31st. And they would have had no problem doing that, right? Is that what you're telling them?
That's, oh, sorry, go ahead. The contract expiration dates are consistent. I believe they've, since my experience here, I believe they've expired on December 31st. I believe the last time we did this, it was bid in November, going from memory. This was bid later than we would have liked it to be bid. That's obvious. We got more questions about the contract than we had anticipated, which suggests that we need to tighten up the specification and make sure that what we've, we've stated as clearly as we can what the expectations are.
And other, or, just to clarify that point, what you're recommending? If this gets extended to 12/31/12, when would you start the bidding process or what would your timing be for that?
Yeah, we would publish it in August or September. And that would give us all of September, October, November and December. This isn't simply just the town making sure that the site is cleaned or making sure that we're vetting, properly vetting the contractor. There are some requirements by DEEP in terms of business plans. There are some other things that are outside the town's timeline where we can't control. We're waiting for a state agency to review and approve, I believe it's a business plan. And so we believe that if we start the process in August, September, any contractor selected would have adequate time to shepherd their required documents through the full approval process by both the town and the state agencies.
But DEEP is concerned with the operating plan, which is basically how they plan to operate the facility, move the material around and take care of it properly.
So I'll turn it back to you. I was just going to ask what the scripts were involved in that.
Go right ahead.
Just let me know when you're done. Okay. Because I'm looking at this and I don't see the DEEP mentioned in this. Is there, is there something that goes through?
Yeah.
What's, what's the timing for their review and approval process? How much total time does all this take before somebody could win a bid and take over?
Well, I mean, we filed.
Mr. Bowman, if you would be kind enough to come up here and we can be, and you can be appropriately identified for all the viewers out there in fair TV land.
Ed Bowman, Assistant Director of Public Works. It's really hard to say what DEEP will do. The original permit we filed, we filed a permit for a volume reduction permit on the site, which included a large volume of information from the town and other information from the vendor. Six years ago, they haven't approved it yet. So we were operating without, without that full permit for six years. We have an old permit, a different kind of permit. They have now are going to, towards the end of the year, I told them, we're changing contractors. Don't, don't, don't try to approve the operating plan as exists because it could be entirely different operator with a different plant. So they agreed to hold off. They were going to finally, under the new DEEP, they're, they're committed to processing things in months rather than years. And they've been making a good chance of that. So we believe that they will process it within 90 days. And the permit will be approved, but just the plan of operations, two things. The plan of operations saying how they lay out the facility, ensuring that all the grass is removed within seven days, leaves within 30 days, wood waste in different size of piles. Also where they're taking it for disposal has to be permitted. All these things have to be filed with DEEP by us, but provided by the contractor. So we feel 90 days is more than enough time to do that with the new operation. DEEP, long time. DEEP, reasonable time.
Okay, but we've basically executed the contract last time without the state permits.
Well, we had, we had a prior permit. But we applied for a new permit, a different kind of permit. We had a recycling permit, then they want, they wanted to make it a volume operation permit.
Okay, still not, does that impact somebody who, a new vendor wins the contract? Does that permit slow up them taking over? Does that have an impact on the approval process?
Yes, another reason to do it in the fall. We got the plan of operation approved by DEEP prior to the change of vendors, if there was a change of vendor.
Okay, do other towns do this and do, is 90 days a reasonable time is what I'm trying to get to?
Well, this is, the DEEP's only been around for less than a year and no one knows for sure. But they have committed to processing within a set period of time, different permits. And so far, it seems to be working.
All right. I apologize, Mr. Walsh, back to you.
Under the existing contract, is any revenue supposed to come into the town?
No, only for bio-sol and compost, marketing plan for that.
Under the currently existing contract, is the current operator allowed to have a retail business for his mulch?
Of course, that's part of the contract. It has been for 15 years, yes.
What does it say about that?
Doesn't say anything.
What do you mean?
He's allowed to, he's allowed, we don't control his sales because we're not taking a piece of it. In the beginning, we took a piece of the tip fee, we took a piece of the marketing sale, then he paid us a rental fee, everything went back and forth. And they charged differently. And they also charged us 75 cents for every car that went in there. But it became impossible to figure out how many cars are out counted. They don't go over the scale. So over time, when we looked at the net, how much we paid versus how much they paid us, it almost seemed more, the net was about $150,000 a year we were paying them roughly. So we went into a system over time where we eliminated the revenue share and just made it a straight payment. Otherwise, we have to someone down there accounting cars. If there's someone down there, it's a cash business. How do we know what the sales are? How do we know? We just don't know. Unless we're running the scale itself and actually counting cars. So we went to a pure volume. We, and the town trucks are weighed, so we know what they weigh. Cars are not weighed. So we went into this system last time. The five-year experience prior said there were 10,000 tons of combination town and residential waste. And we said, if that's the case, at $15 a ton, which was the prior contract was, we'll just pay that amount of money from $15 a ton times that, 10,000 every year, rather than go through a complicated. Because an audit doesn't do it. You got to be there to watch it happen, auditing it after. So that's how we know there was 6,000 cars there and 2,000. There's just no way of knowing. So we went to this system. Every five years we changed it depending on, one time it was the RTM had the impact because it was, first it was a lease, then a contract. The Board of Selectment has it, put into it. This time, again, as Tony pointed out, we didn't do it soon enough. Otherwise, you would have had the impact or input into what we're doing. So I think it, for a lot of reasons, doing it this way, delaying gives everybody the chance to get their say into this contract and see what's going on.
Because I don't understand, you know, I see them selling the mulch down there. You see their whole operation.
Right.
And is that all that mulch made on-site?
No.
So they make it off-site and then they?
Haul it in and sell.
They haul it in and they retail it.
Right.
Correct. And I don't understand why we're using town facilities to be retailing sales of stuff.
Well, you're right.
And not charging people for rental space when there are competitors that are in this town that have to pay rent and taxes if they own the land.
Well, I don't know who the competitors are in town at this point. When we started, we were the only game in town 15 years ago and 10 years ago. It's only sold in volume, there's no bag sales. Now I know there are other places around that are doing that. And maybe it's time to relook at it.
Is it? Chris, I have more questions. Just, we'll come back.
Just a follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Board Selectment. In terms of the permitting process, I'm trying to understand. What you're saying is that the former DEEP never approved?
No, right.
A permit or a plan? Are those the same?
Permit, the whole permit, which is about 200 pages long. Included in that permit was the plan of operation of the vendor. They never fully acted on it. They acted a part of it, went back and forth, back and forth. They never approved it, so we're operating under the pre-existing recycling permit until a new permit's in place.
And that pre-existing recycling permit was the same operator or a different operator?
Oh, that was a different operator.
It was a different operator?
We went from Earthgrow, who was bought out by Scotts, who then decided not to do it anymore, GPM, to GreenCycle, to now this is where we're at now.
Okay, so we're operating under GreenCycle's permit that was approved prior?
GreenCycle was never approved.
Okay, not GreenCycle, I'm sorry.
GPM, yeah.
It's Earthgrow.
The town holds the permit.
Whoever it was that it was approved. And what you're saying is that anything going forward would be held up because of the process. And I guess I'm a little bit, the permitting and approval process, a little bit confused because it hasn't held us up to this point. And why would that be different?
Because right now, we're, they've asked us to file a plan of operations, which is the only thing that hasn't been approved. And I've asked for a delay based on what we're doing. And they were okay and say, if you get a new vendor, file a new plan of operations, we'll hold up until you do that. So they know we're in this process. So the rest of the application has been signed off on. It's just the plan of operation of the vendor has not been.
Okay.
And there's no sense in acting on a plan of operation. If it's going to change, then we have to go back and do it all over again, so.
And did DEEP come to us and request that prior to the bid process happening?
They requested it in October and we told them it was happening then. And we thought we, I said, if a new vendor was chosen at that time, by January, by March, we'd file a plan of operation. And then it didn't happen and I requested him further delay and they've agreed to that because there's no reason to act on it now. Plan of operations no longer exists.
Okay. Mr. Walsh, back to you.
So the current contract allows them to sell mulch or sell anything they want to sell there?
Sell bulk product. Mulch, wood chips, colored dyed wood chips, bulk product.
Stone?
I'm not sure about stone, all we ever talked about. There may be stone, so the contract does not mention anything but, you know, organic products.
So pretty much anything that they want to sell, they can sell there? Is that what you're saying?
As long as, as long as it was based on anything that brought into the site. In other words, it was, we bring wood chips in, whether you process them there or not, it'd have to be related to the material dropped off. So it has to be the same kind of organic, made from the same kind of aromatic material that we're bringing in.
Is it, is everything in each one of these bins organic material that was dropped off at that site by our residents?
No, I just told you that, no. That's all been brought in. All that stuff is hauled out and composted somewhere else. The only thing that's processed on-site is wood chips. You cannot compost leaves and grass on that site. Then you really have odor complaints. 20 years ago, that's why we stopped it.
No, but the wood chips that are here, are those all processed on-site?
No.
Is it all of our material that's here?
No.
So it could be from other people that they purchased this stuff from?
Right.
And do they provide us any type of insurance in regards to that area where they do their retail sales?
Any type of insurance?
Yeah, like if somebody's coming to their retail sales area and someone gets into a car accident or somebody's walking around the facility and whatever and gets a block.
Yes, they have the liability, accident liability, car and road insurance on the whole site.
They do?
Yes.
What about the amounts of material that are kept on-site? There's a certain amount that's been able to kept on-site, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And who monitors that? At times I've seen an exorbitant amount, it's like a mountain.
There was a mountain after the last hurricane.
No, I'm talking about after the hurricane.
That's what I mean, after the last hurricane. For two months afterwards, people are bringing stuff in like crazy. And they could basically, more than we would have liked on the site was on the site. They're in the process of getting rid of it now. It takes a longer time to get rid of it when you have that much more. But when you have a plan of operations in place, it will tell you how much, how many cubic yards of wood chips can be stored, how many cubic yards of logs, how many cubic yards of wood, how many cubic yards of mulch and how many cubic yards of leaves, how many cubic yards of grass. That's all in the plan of operations and DEEP will monitor that.
And what happens if they go over that?
They go over it, they get fined, I guess. I mean, we've never had a situation where, you know, a fine was incurred or anything.
Were, in the months after the hurricane, were the amounts over that amount?
Well, over what? Over the amount of what we filed five years ago, probably, yeah. I mean, I don't think the total site was over, but the amount of wood was over. Because it was all wood, brown wood and wood ready to be ground.
But I thought there was specific requirements regarding the amounts of certain things you're allowing.
Yeah, that's, there will be, but they didn't act on it, so there's nothing really in place.
Because isn't there a danger if the amounts are too large?
Danger for?
Can those things set on fire?
It's potential, it could happen.
The heat in those sometimes have been known to start spontaneously combusting.
Especially in the hot weather, as you mentioned. In the colder weather, not so much.
So if there's too much material there, and that's one of the reasons why they try to keep the materials at a certain level?
Correct. So it's our, everybody's?
There's fire lanes there that access the material in case there is a fire. And if anything, we, the town, are the biggest abusers for bringing in more material that pushes them off the edge. For example, in Irene, we brought in 1,129 tons alone for that storm. So we could tell him, don't take this stuff. And then we end up paying more to bring it someplace else. We could do bite off our noses by our face, but why would we do it?
Well, isn't the operator's requirement then to just, whatever they have to do, whether they have to bring in a second machine or whatever to process the stuff so that it's only, there's only enough?
Right, we watched to see that they reasonably are doing their best to do that. But there is a reasonable best that you can do. He runs, he brought in an extra grinding machine. He cranked up his operations to go as long as he could during the day, but still stay within our residential noise complaints. He opened up the facility, which he didn't have to, on Saturday and Sunday to our residents, had no charge to us, which meant that more material came in, which probably pushed him more over the limit. But we said no harm, no foul because he's helping on our residents.
For force majeure, so to speak.
Sorry.
Okay, and what's the danger of having too much material on-site? It doesn't really matter. We could just keep pushing him out higher and higher and higher and higher and higher. Is that, is that what you're saying? I mean, I don't know what, is, from my reading of the stuff, there's only a certain amount of material you're supposed to reasonably safely keep on-site?
Reasonably, yes, right. And that's our judgment. And within my judgment, it's always been in that, within that category. I've never been worried about it going over that point. Would I hold him to the exact, you know, cubic foot, cubic yards? And do you need a time to measure those piles every day and make sure he went over? No, because I think there's a much leeway in what he's allowed there that you can go more. And again, what I'm pointing out was that it was to our advantage that he go more because it would cost us more to get rid of it someplace else and/or tell our residents, don't bring it down there on Saturday and Sunday. We can do that in the future.
All right, just, and if I could kind of bring the conversation back to topic. The motion at hand is to hear, consider and act upon a resolution concerning the entering into an extension of the contract. I think those are all great points and it probably makes sense to come back and review the contract in light of some of those questions in terms of what we want. But at the moment, the question is, we want to extend this contract at this point. So if we can kind of focus a bit more on the motion at hand. Ideally, if we could do one of two things coming out of here. We could postpone this to some date. Or we could take action on it and potentially extend the contract. There might be some other options. But if either one of those two took place, potentially could come back and explore the contract itself to look at those terms. I think there are a number of issues you're raising. They're definitely worthy of more thought, more discussion in terms of what we want to do on a longer-term basis.
I guess the question, I guess some of the questions I have to deal with, are they in full compliance with the contract? And I mean, there's another issue, and Scott Bartlett was good enough to get back to me today regarding, because I pulled some of the number, I had finance run some of the numbers on expenses there. And there's a requirement that they supply 5,000 yards of organic materials for mulch that the town uses, correct? Okay, because they seem to be billing us for every yard of mulch that we use. I guess it must be used at the golf courses. I guess it must be used at the golf courses, town buildings, or whatever.
For special product, product.
Well, I've got a series of invoices here.
There is, there's two things identified in the contract, correct me if I'm wrong, that is, that there's what's called the Fairfield mix, which is a general mulch material, which a quantity is identified in the contract that DBW or town agencies can pick up at no cost. And there's also identified in the contract, once every, what, three years, three or four years, they're supposed to produce several thousand yards of a very particular wood chip for the biofilter--
For the biofilter every five years, yeah.
Right. But then, Mr. Walsh, there's also our opportunity to buy products off of them in bulk versus any other person in town that's selling bulk. And that occurs a lot with, like with topsoil. And what Scott does in that case there is he checks around for the current price. If they're competitive and the product is good, then we would, you know, go with them. If someone else has got a better price and good quality, then we would go with them. So we purchase materials from them, as we would any vendor, and treat them the same as any other vendor, to make sure that they have the right price at the right time, the best price at the right point.
Is mulch one of those products that you purchase?
Again, it's special mulch. I'm not familiar with those invoices, so I'd have to review them with Scott. But I'm trying to make the distinction, there's special mulches, like the red stuff, you know, the high-end stuff, whatever you want to call it. And then there's this Fairfield mix, which is a more generic mulch material, that we are allowed a certain amount in the contract for free, and we shouldn't be charged for that. What I would assume, if you're looking at it again, I don't have them, and I could redeal them with Scotty.
Yep.
Well, actually, since the board of selectmen hasn't seen us, we can kind of--
Yeah.
I can pass that on.
In the past, there was nothing but that town mulch. As it added more products, well, it became more attractive to use more than town mulch for better product.
And again, just, the motion on before us is about the extension of the contract. If these are issues that would impact that, is there, that we definitely need to explore more?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to postpone this, extend this, give us time to get that corrected next time? What's the--
Well, if you want to limit the conversation of whether the contract should be extended until next year, I guess that's, you know, whatever, and I guess we can explore these issues at a later point before the board of selectmen.
For this afternoon?
Sure.
Because that's the motion on the table?
Yeah.
In terms of reviewing the terms to contract, again, I think you're raising a number of good points. I don't mean to, just for today. Because my concern is, overall, we're kind of operating in a, I'm going to call it a gray area, if I'm generous. It says that the contract doesn't really exist, and we'd like to resolve that on a timely basis, so we're back on track there. I think that we've identified a couple of things. One, that from a bid, offering and approval process, we need to allot much more time before the end of the contract, so we can get this properly processed. If there's a new vendor, they have a reasonable amount of time to get up to speed and not hurt their business plan, their operation, or their economics in doing that. Second, I think it's been five, it sounds like five or 10 years or more before we've taken a serious look at this contract.
Five years, every five years.
Every five years?
Every time there's a renewal or a change from a board of selectmen, or RTM, back to the board of selectmen, sorry.
Let me just, let me just say five years, then. I don't mean to overstate that. And I think that there are certainly some good discussion points that Mr. Walsh is bringing up, and I think we need to take time to look at those, too. And I suspect you've got more there, if I read into the look on your face.
Oh, no, I've--
And I think we need to benefit those. I'm just not sure, given, we haven't had the discussion, given the rest of the board of selectmen may not be part of the invoice and some of the other pieces. I think we need to look at it from that standpoint, as well as give our team here chances to give us some suggestions how they'd like to see the contract revised. So I, yes, I'd like to cut it off today, but no, I don't want to cut it off if that, if you'll let me answer it both ways.
Sure. Rich, in regards to the summer and removing of the stuff, isn't, aren't there other ways to try to mitigate some of those things you're talking about, like the dust and the odor and stuff? Like, some of the stuff that you've done down at the transfer station with the water sprinkler systems, and aren't there like odor reducers, that chemical odor reducers and things like that, that could be, that could be used to do that?
If dust, you could probably bring in sprayers, reasonably, to keep the dust down. Setting up, I mean, just compare the two. What we have down at the transfer station is a, you know, installed, calibrated system that sprays mist of deodorizer in the air, you know, in certain locations to where puddles form, stuff like that. It's not, it's not a portable thing, that you move around to that whole site, nor would you want to build a permanent one there. I don't, off the top of my head, I mean, I know that there are people that are creative that can build things. There's nothing off the shelf that's reasonably, we could say, the contractor, get that odor-reducing black box and put it in while you're taking the stuff off. And again, I can't emphasize enough, Mr. Walsh, is that going back, because we've lived through this, going back just seven or eight years ago, I mean, every time the contractors are, opened up a pile, not to create a big movement, just opened it up. I mean, the complaints were pretty instantaneous. And this material here is, can be, on a given day, a lot worse than what you get at the transfer station. It's pretty odor stuff. And that's one of the reasons why, is you see those huge piles of black piles that are on the right inside? That's compost, including sludge, and it's specifically sitting there and curing there for 30 to 90, well, actually for 90 days. And it's not the type of things you want to dig into, because before it completely cures, it is pretty odorous. And the other thing you need to do is screen the material like that. And the screening, again, I agree with you, you can control with some misting on the machine itself, but to try to capture all those odors off a screening machine, I think it's too much of a challenge.
We don't let them screen when it's high humidity or high temperature either. Because that could also bring more odors.
In regard to doing these contracts and going from one order to the others, have you ever spoken to ways other towns have done it? Is there a way to do it where the new operator would take a reasonable amount of stuff that was there and just continue their operation, as opposed to having to take every piece of particle out of here down to the dirt? Because to me, that sounds like, regardless of the way, unless we stick with the same person forever, we're going to have to close down this transfer station. I mean, not transfer station, we're going to have to close down this operation for some period of time.
It didn't last long. Because in January or February, there was so little coming in, they could segregate the new waste from the old waste. So GreenCycle worked on that site with the old contractor for a month and a half, you got it cleaned up.
So like in January, when that was going on, all the Christmas trees and stuff that are coming in, that was not a problem? Who was going to take care of that anymore?
Segregated, because the piles were down, over here was the new waste, over here was the old.
And the last time I made the transfer, it was a completely green site?
Because there was a lot of stuff on the site the last time.
There was--
Krista?
Just to the motion that's before us, like, it's a concern that we are basically, gray area, yes, is generous, there's no contract right now. And so we're, the motion is essentially, allows us to extend this contract. If we don't do that, and what's, what's the alternative? And specifically, if we were to start a bid process today, what would the timeline be? When would be, when would the cleanup be happening? So say we vote no, and this has to go out to bid now. Is that, one, is that a fair assumption, that if we vote no, this then goes to bid? Or do we just continue to operate? And if I am making a fair assumption there, and we do go to bid tomorrow, start that process tomorrow, what would that timeline be?
If we were to bid based on, tighten up the bid that we originally published in December, the process would probably be 30 to 45 days.
Plus, we need the comments.
And, but if, but based on what I'm hearing, there's some interest in reformatting the arrangement that's down there, considering other arrangements, perhaps with revenue sharing or something like that. That would take considerably more time. In addition to getting everyone's comments and suggestions for how the contract should be structured, we'd also have to look at the various costs associated with doing that. Having a person, a town employee, counting cars, weighing vehicles, weighing waste, you know, whatever that is. And so that would take considerably more time. And if this isn't approved, do we close the--
Just keep going.
Just keep going.
We'd be working without a--
We just work until--
Work without a contractor, I guess another option would be to close the operation.
We wouldn't do that. And a real problem is, under the law, we have to provide a spot for recycling for residents. It doesn't have to be imperative, we can take it anywhere.
No, we're--
And we also have to have our own recycling. And if we're going to commercialize and go anywhere, I mean, we just designate Milford or wherever we want. But what do we, what do we do with those residents, and what do we do with our own waste is the problem. So you need to at least have it over the top.
Good. Just to be clear, it would considerably more time, so just ballpark. Say, we say, no, sorry, we want to go forward in a different way, we'd like to look at this contract, and we'd like to get moving on this right now. What's your best guess? I know it's an estimate, but when will we be opening a new--
Probably not before 60 days, being realistic, from the time that it takes to research information, collect data, get feedback from everyone that wants to offer suggestions.
And the 60 days would be opening the bid, or opening the actual new facility?
Putting it out.
Putting it out.
Okay, so 60 days to put it out, to bid. And then from there, I think, Rich, would it be two to three weeks of physical transition?
Well, you wouldn't do the transition until after there was an award, because it was the existing company, you wouldn't be moving on. All you have to do is move, there, we're moving, then gone. You'd have 30 days to evaluate bids.
Yes.
Advertise and evaluate, minimum, so that's 90 days. Then you'd have to give, make an award if it's a new company that you-- I don't know how the company's going to clean it off, hundreds of 9,000 cars a month, or 6,000 cars a month coming in, and hundreds of tons of the old waste. In the wintertime, you can segregate over here and over there, and you're switching vendors. And at the same time, then we'd have to file with the DEP for approval of the new operating plan. Rich could, you know, actually, they let us operate without final approval, but we always have.
So basically, in terms of this vote today, if I'm understanding correctly, we can choose to vote no, and in that case, we're going to have the ongoing operations that are happening down there. And then, depending on the action of this board, to look at the contract and evaluate, then at some point down the road, possibly, you know, in the same timeline, even if we vote no, we would have, could have another RFP. Or we can choose to say yes, have there be a valid contract in place, imperfect though it may be, and then go forward, given the timeline you've suggested, and vet this properly while having an actual contract that we're operating under.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, if we go to public comment at this point?
We like December, I just like the way you articulate it.
All right, any comments from the public? And again, guidelines are that it's public comment.
Hi, my name's John Damon. I live on Lakeview Drive in Fairfield. I'd like to give you a little bit of my experience and history anyway. We've been part of this site, my company's been part of this site for a long time. And I think that there are, there are a lot of points that they make in public works that are so, but the real issue at hand in this situation is that what's happened with the town's inability to put this bid out appropriately, has created an unfair opportunity for other, you know, other companies in the community, outside of the community. GreenCycle, for example, wasn't, isn't part of the community, they're from Farmington, and they have many other locations. The biggest issue at hand is that my company handles several major municipalities. And in, at which point, the timing that's being discussed here right now, while there is some reference to whether it's ideal or not, I think the reality is that Stanford, for example, handles, we have the Stanford contract, and I've had it for three years now. They manage much more yard waste than Fairfield does. Throughout Irene, throughout Alfred, all the storms and that sort of thing. I think that the issue at hand isn't whether or not the material, first of all, could be taken out of there to provide the opportunity for the next vendor. We were actually the company that was hired by Ground Products to clean that site six years ago. I have quite a lot of experience in it. I'm well aware of, I live in the community, been here for 20-plus years. We also, I also understand from experience that a lot of those issues were, what they're referring to as an operations plan, is an operations and management plan, which should be standardized for this facility. It shouldn't change from vendor to vendor. Because any facility, and I have a DEP private wood waste facility, so I'm very aware of this. We work with DEEP all the time. The real issue is simple. There were five years that went on for the transition, for the operations, and then to develop a new RFP to support a new bid. Everybody knew that, and they've known it for, they've been doing it for 10 or 15 years now. That's what really needs to be addressed here. Is it fair and equitable for everybody? Can that site be cleaned and managed in the timeframe? Yes, it can, and I think that the idea is that it is reflective on whoever the potential proposals are, to make the decision whether they want to tackle the task, if there's material left there on site, or if they want to make the transition. And I think that what you'll find is that everyone would welcome the opportunity, or another opportunity, to be able to operate there or in any other situation. The, the issues with the material that's there, and there was some reference to composting and smell, well, by the terms of the original contract and the last RFP, there's not supposed to be stockpiling there. So the only real issues with smell should be from the biosolids compost, and that's, I also have technical certification from the University of Maine in composting, that sort of thing. And there are many other items that can be dealt with to address the odor there. Our marketing company that we were dealing with for that biosolids, brought a multitude of other options out. So I think there are, that does reflect back on your other issue of the contract contents. But I think that we're really missing the point that if we don't put this out to bid, and we don't maintain a responsibility of bidding it when it's supposed to be bid, and either form a group of people to make sure that it's a proper bid. It's not a complex bid. Most of the DEEP, DEEP outline, that operations and management plan that needs to be developed, the volume reduction permit, those all have standard requirements. It's not something, you can request differences in your operating and management plan, but that one should have the same. You have, you have the same products there, you're dealing with biosolids compost, you're dealing with yard waste. It shouldn't change from vendor to vendor. It should, a vendor, yes, needs to adopt the policy, needs to adopt what the requirements are for the volume reduction permit. We have guidelines in our facility that are standard guidelines. And you request, if you're dealing, managing a different sort of material or that sort of thing, you request that change in your permit. That should be a standard format. But all of the items that are, that are on the table here, Stanford goes out to bid in July, Westport goes out to bid the end of the month. Westport, for example, is right, just like that facility is, right in the heart of the community. They have specific guidelines they have to follow. We haul that material out every day. It's the same sort of material that's there, with the exception of the biosolids compost. But the biosolids compost is something that's supposed to be dealt with in that, in a routine, in a standardized format, where there's curing, there's screening, there's marketing, and all of that. So, you know, I would, would really object to-- So, you know, I would really object to allowing Green Cycle the opportunity to stay there another year and provide competition for all of the local businesses. Because, like, for example, there are several people that called me when this RFP came out on such a short term and said, I don't, there's not enough time to bid this. So the town and the residents are missing out on potentially a better opportunity. And I don't think that it's the town, it should be the town's responsibility to define whether or not there should be a profit sharing or whatever. I think that should be an idea that a proposer puts out there. Why should the town invest their time and resources to present that? Let the proposers come up with the ideas. I think that was the essence of what the original RFPs were, was that the proposers come up with plans and marketing plans for bio solids compost and what they were going to do for the community and that sort of thing. So I think that really needs to be the Board of Selectmen's responsibility. Has the town been diligent at doing what its charter and the statutes require? You have a service down there that you need, that needs to go out to bid to maintain the requirements in your charter and the statutes in the state. You need to do that. If we were talking about, oh, we just had a bad hurricane again, or something of that situation, it was a catastrophe and there was so much going on, or a tornado that came through town and took part of the town out, well, yeah, then we could say, well, let's extend the contract. There's too much chaos. We're not in that situation. There were five years prior to this for them to be thinking about what the next contract was going to be and what the next bid was going to be. And to wait till three weeks before the contract expired. And then to suggest today that it's going to take several months. Well, haven't we learned that lesson for the last 10 or 15 years? And should there be, you know, an unfair opportunity provided to another vendor when the rest of us in the community would also like the opportunity? I guess that's, you know, that's the bulk of what I have to say.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Any other public comments?
I just endorse what John has said.
Sir, if you'd come up to the mic and identify yourself.
Okay, thank you. I'm Bert Andrin. I own, I used to own Swedish Motorworks, but now I'm Bert's Mulch. I do sell mulch. And I endorse John's thinking completely because I feel that the town is not getting a fair shake in buying the mulch that down in this one area. They've got a monopolistic control over the mulch and it's a most convenient place for people to get mulch in that, yes. But I don't think that the town and the town people are getting a fair shake. I know I couldn't, I could not buy mulch from Green Cycle and then go out and sell it at a competitive price and make enough to cover the cost of my trucking and fueling that. So I just, I endorse Mr. Damon completely.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment? Sir, if you'd come up to the mic and identify yourself.
Jim Taylor, Fairfield. I just hate to see the town shoot itself in a foot and pass up an opportunity to do better for all of us. I think the fact for this to go out to bid is a sense of fair play. I think our whole system is based on fair play. I don't think anything lopsided ever works. I think that if I were the contract holder and my contract was coming up, I don't think I'd build a mountain of material to have to move in a small amount of time. That poor planning on my part doesn't necessitate an emergency on somebody else's part. So if you weigh in the fact of moving all of this material, causing it to be a problem, I think the people that caused the problem should not be the people that benefit from the problem. That point being that they've eliminated a fair opportunity for others. And I do agree with everything that John Damon said because he covered it very well. The town could be profiting from this. This is a, it's a win-win situation. But just because there was like, I don't know, the contract was a little messy in the beginning, doesn't mean you can't straighten it right out. Straighten it out, put it on and get on with it. The transition can happen seamlessly. These guys operate and they handle material. That's what they do. It isn't like you or me go out and look at it and go, oh my God, you know? These guys look at it, it's like, it's, that's going to take me four or five hours, and they do it. So I would urge you not to be influenced by the size of the job, let's say. Because when you take and you use equipment that, for heaven's sakes, it's like watching, what's that gold mining show on TV? They move tons of material. That's what these guys do. So they can get the job done okay. You don't have to sweat it. Put it out to bid and let it roll. Then everybody wins. Let's, you know, this town can operate real well. We have a whole good thing going on. So that's how I like to see it be. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? All right, then back to the board. Kristin?
These are both for Ms. Holland, I believe. Actually, it could be Mr. Bowman and Mr. White as well. But just in terms of the comments, in terms of proposers, and when you receive bids or have received these bids in the past, is it typical that the, besides answering the specifics of the bid itself, that those bidding would offer specific proposals as was just suggested here by Mr. Damon?
It's atypical. Unless we have something that we've never, ever done before and we don't know how to do it. We typically are the ones that work with Public Works, that work with Engineering, Conservation, whichever department, to frame and structure a bid document. And we need to clearly identify what our expectations are and how we want things bid so to ensure that we get bids that are on a level playing field, that everybody is bidding on this, pardon me, on the same thing. That said, there are times when we'll ask, we'll state the scope of work and we'll state how we want bids, and we'll ask bidders. Give us options for value-added services. If we can get, if making a police car black with a white hood is less expensive than white with a black hood, tell us that and tell us what the value is, what it's worth. So there are times when we'll do alternates. But typically, it's the town that would structure the framework from the start.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Holland. The second question, just in terms of the stockpiling. What is, what's the current policy for stockpiling down there? I know I've heard different things and I'd just like to hear maybe Mr. Bowman or Mr. White in terms of what is allowable.
Basically, under state law, you've got to remove all grass within seven days, is leaves, or anything except for government.
Yeah, but I think it's important to note that the RFP outlined that. The RFP both five years ago and the current one outlined that no stockpiling was allowed.
So, but of wood, wood waste, there's no, other than what would be in the plan of operations, which would sort of say.
Their guidelines are.
Would tell you how much could be there. Right now, there really isn't any because they never act on any. So we're just doing what's reasonable now. When you had a hurricane in July or a snowstorm, whatever, and there's more stuff on site, as Rich pointed out with you, it's reasonable then under an act of God or whatever. It's not as reasonable it would be in the summertime. So there's no real hard and fast thing. It also depends, I suppose, whether you're hauling everything on site or grinding some and storing on site and how much of either one you're doing, I don't know if you're hauling it all up or, like they're making wood shifts there for sale and wood shifts for us constantly. So it's not a simple question to answer, you know?
Thank you.
Anything else?
But I know I went down to the Stanford.
Excuse me, sir?
I'm sorry.
If you would. We're done with public comment. Thank you.
Sure. I guess quick follow-up on your comments. This seems like it would be the perfect opportunity when we do go do an RFP, whether it be soon or later, that we would want to take it, don't you think? Revenue drivers that somebody else might be able to bring to the table.
We'd be happy to consider it, sure.
The original contract had that.
That's how it originally was done.
Fifteen years ago, there was a percentage of tip fee and a percentage of the sales. At the end of the year, we, and we also paid to get rid of the residential and to get rid of the town waste. We had no tip fee. And at the end of the year, we wound up being about the same place we were with $150,000 or so was being paid to the vendor after the revenue, after the price we paid to haul off other stuff. And we changed that around. We changed, instead of, now we only pay to haul, the residential and town delivers stuff that isn't processed on site. Originally, it was everything. But the real problem is how do you monitor revenue? That was the real, that has been the driving problem and that's why little by little we got rid of the revenue because we don't have any way of knowing how much money they're making on anything or what, how much is going over the scale, how much is, their cars are free, but they're not weighed at all. But we get charged for them. But how do you monitor that? The only way you have, you'd have to run the scale house. And you'd have to have someone, separate person that's counting cars or cars going over counter and no car.
Well, technologies have changed in the last 15 years. There are ways to count things that you don't have to be present. There's ways to have gates that every time the gate goes up, they would do a count for you.
Doesn't work that way.
Guys, if I can to focus the discussion again, Mr. Walsh's point, if I can paraphrase, is that we should allow some creativity in response to the bid to increase revenue and let the responder let us know.
We agree.
As opposed to trying to solve that right now. But Mr. Walsh's point, I think, is well taken. There's all sorts of technology options.
And I guess the other question I have is, are there consultants out there that could give the town advice on the best way to put out an RFP? Is there ways people, specialists in this area who could guide the town in putting together an RFP? Where they could suggest revenue drivers, technologies for doing accounts, things like that? And if so, should we engage one? Under your plan, where you want to go out to December and give the extension, it seems as though we would have time.
We could certainly look at that, sure.
Are there people that you or Rich know of, consultants, that are in the industry?
Oh, there's plenty of them, I'm concerned. They're there. They've paid for them, but they're there.
Well, except I believe Mr. Walsh may have suggested, or maybe it was Kristin earlier, that we look at other towns and see what they're doing and how they construct their contracts. Certainly, we can.
Well, everybody has a different system. There's no one I don't think has it complicated as we're at.
The only issue that you have as a town compared to every other one that I'm familiar with in the community is your bio solids.
Or the sale.
The sale of the products, though, is treated as a completely separate entity.
I'm just saying, it is different than other.
Well, now that East Hartford, for example, does the same thing. Milford does the same thing. They allow.
If we could.
I just wondered.
Again, there's a lot to talk about, so I don't mean to, but just to focus the conversation for a bit, I know Ms. Holland has got some time constraints in the back end of this. Does the board have any more questions for Ms. Holland at this time?
I guess I, my only other question is, is an issue raised by Mr. Damon. Are, it sounds like other communities, though, are bidding their stuff for a new contract this summer. Why are they doing it in the middle of the summer?
I have no idea. I mean, I'll find out.
And also, it seems to be a big problem for us.
I'll check with Stanford and Westport tomorrow. Why not? We'll find out. I mean, we've always done it this way, so other towns are doing it differently. We'll find out.
And that would also allow at the same time to check how, perhaps, how their contracts are worded and see if there's anything we can learn to go to school on what they are at the same time. All right, any other questions for Ms. Holland?
I'm sorry, I have a prior.
Wait, thank you. I know you stayed past what your deadline is, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Back to the board. I think that there's definitely more information at some point before we actually get into signing a contract in terms of what should be included. Is it the, should we vote on the extension or should we postpone that? Either way, it seems we need more information before we sign anything. Any preference from the board?
I mean, overall, I guess I have some issues with the way this has been handled from a fairness standpoint, from a charter standpoint, from knowing that we have a five-year contract and we're just putting the RFP out in the first week of December or to go into place, somebody's supposed to go into place on January 1st. And now, since that point in time and since the questions that were asked to the town that kept delaying the RFP, because people were requesting information, that went into January, and then in January, the town pulls their bid. And now we're here, sitting here on the 21st of March, and we're just getting to this now. Another three months have gone down delaying this whole thing. And I understand now the process is if we go out to an RFP, we're looking at at least 90 days. We're probably half, now at least at a minimum, halfway through a year. So none of this has been handled anywhere near the way it should, nor the way I would expect any RFP to be handled. And raises a lot of questions about fairness for other people who want to bid on this. On the other hand, I do have some questions in regards to, I hear what Mr. White and who I respect a tremendous amount, and Mr. Bowman, a tremendous amount for all the stuff that you do for the town, about switching over in, say, July or something else like that and the problems that might cause. I'm also hearing that other communities surrounding us don't seem to have a problem with it. So I'm kind of, don't know which direction to go in because of what's going on here. I mean, I almost would like to have two weeks to hear why Westport or some of these other communities seem to think it's a great time to switch or potentially switch operators in the middle of the summer when they have the same amount of grass and stuff coming in as we do.
Yeah. Just to be fair, we're not sure they think it's a great time. We know, we understand they're doing it and we don't know what problems they have or don't have. Also, just to clarify, yet, there's no, nobody's defending the process. There's, I think, and Mr. Walsh, you may have been late, Ms. Holland clearly stated that this wasn't done in the best possible manner. We discussed it in January when some of these questions came up. And the question was, do we extend or not? These same issues about the extension and about, if you will, fairness to the bids and being able to get it done were raised at that point. But then Ms. Holland also had a significant leave of absence, which is what has caused part of this delay here. Otherwise, this would have happened on a much more timely basis. So your points are well taken. There were some extenuating circumstances that allowed for that. But given where we are and given we're talking about, you know, 90 days plus to sort this out, what I'm hearing is that you're thinking of postponing for a few weeks to clarify some of these questions might be reasonable.
Well, I, I guess to Mr. Bowman, I mean.
I'm not asking for a motion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, do you think we'd be able to get any information if we postponed it in two weeks?
Oh, sure.
What the, why other communities seem to want to do it in the middle of the summer?
Two weeks isn't going to make.
And I'll ask Rich, too, please. I'm very curious.
I would like to run around, kick the tires and go to places. I'm very curious.
We did that 15 years ago. I haven't done that.
Yeah, I mean, I hear both points. I don't want to add insult to injury for people who wanted to go through the process and it's been delayed. On the other hand, if there's a legitimate reason, like you pointed out, some.
Well, but two weeks isn't going to make a difference whether you do it in July or December.
Exactly.
Just to clarify, we're going out to bid one way or the other. The only question is when we're going out.
And I don't think two weeks is going to make a difference. We could go out in July. Two weeks isn't early.
I just want my point, no doubt we'd be the first ones to, you know, say we've been myopic with this, not, you know, based on our experience and trying to, you know, move this thing better each five-year increment, et cetera. But I've heard some interesting things that other towns are doing, they're doing it now. We should go out and kick the tires and see what other people are doing.
And Rich, you might find out when you call these other towns.
That's a different story.
And they might say to you, no, we're doing it the wrong way. They might say, we wish we did it in December and January, which would be good to hear, too. They might say, we're doing it the wrong way. Other, you know. I mean, if you think two weeks will give you some time to make some calls and give us more input, I think.
Absolutely.
Okay.
You know, I just, first of all, I want to thank everyone involved in this process because I appreciate the fact that Ms. Holland and I wish you were here and I will relate this to her, you know, was for. this to her, you know, was forthcoming in terms of her taking responsibility for the fact that this wasn't done in the most ideal way. I also appreciate that there are folks who have spoken up and have kind of brought this out into this conversation, so that we can have something that is what's best for the town. I think Mr. White, when he talked about the transition of the movement of materials, I certainly would never underestimate the whole movement and the smell issue. I grew up near the mushroom capital of the world, and I have a very fair respect for what compost can do in terms of impacting quality of life, though I don't live at the beach here, but that's significant. And there are some very valid issues that I think all, all of you, Mr. Bowman, Mr. White, and Ms. Holland have brought forward. However, I am inclined to have this bid process move forward sooner rather than later, and I think it just comes down to the issue of it being fair and equitable. And it sounds like it, we may have to do a little bit of learning here, we may need to find out what other towns are doing, we need to look at some of the other contract structures. But I'm not really interested in waiting until the December timeframe to go through this. That said, the motion that's before us is about a current contract. I'm not very comfortable having an operation that's in place without a contract, so I really find myself in a bind, because if I'm not voting to extend this contract, then we're left with a situation that seems a bit untenable in my, in my mind. So, I guess I'm wondering, is there a way to, to extend the contract for a shorter period of time, perhaps, to then allow us to move this bid process forward, starting now?
I think if I listen, we kind of have that verbally. What you're asking for is, we reduce that the writing and say we extend the contract month to month, or week to week, or some number...
We do it month to month, yeah.
Until we, if that's, okay, I think we, since we're kind of doing that, we can solidify what we're doing in writing, so it's clear to the board what we're doing, and there's some substance for that. And then reading into what you're saying by saying, we still postpone it for a couple weeks, get some more information, so we can get this out to formal bid as soon as possible, based on what we learn.
I'm not necessarily saying that. Do we need to postpone it, in that if we're going to do a month to month, I like that idea, that I wasn't thinking that way, but in essence, that's what we're doing right now. Will we need to postpone it in order to have that happen?
My understanding was that there's some substantive questions, in terms of what we can do, how easy it is to do this in an August, September timeframe, which might be the earliest that we can get this out to, assuming we start it ASAP. As well as some, potentially some additional business opportunities, we need to at least revise the bid to allow for those to come in. And there may be some things we learn while we're out there for the next two weeks. So, I guess I would be leaning towards supporting a motion to postpone for a couple weeks to the next meeting, just to see what we can learn, come back, and then, you know, formalize this process at that point. We're kind of, to some degree, in for a penny, in for a pound. We're already operating without a formal contract. Not an ideal situation, and not where we want to be.
Yeah, I would take, our assignment is to work with, I mean, can we get agreement with the existing operator, we are going month by month, I mean, existing conditions of the contract. So, you have that in place, and simultaneously just move as quickly as possible, touching base with you in a couple weeks to get a new RFP together to get help.
Most will give you more information, decide whether you want to do it or not. Sounds like you want to do it, let's get the rest of the information, see if it confirms it.
Your thoughts, Mr. Walsh?
I think having the two weeks, well, I mean, I hear Kristen's point, and I'm not leaning that way myself, but I'd like to hear what these other communities, at least Westport and whatever, them putting it out in the middle of the thing, and how they handle it, and can it be done effectively without, you know, I, my biggest concern is, I don't want to find out in July that the entire beach area is calling for selectmen's office saying that we have this horrendous situation going. If Westport is putting it out to bid, says, you know what, we wish we had changed, it should be done in January, or, you know, I don't know what we're going to find. But I don't think two weeks is going to kill, kill this, one way or the other. I don't like the fact of the RFP not being properly managed and the fairness thing, so I, I still want that on the list, and I'm very cognizant of that. I'm also cognizant of other business opportunities, and maybe bringing in a consultant or something like that, to try to figure out a way, maybe we can generate more tax, not tax revenue, but revenue for the town, for our nine acres, you know, whatever. So, I think two weeks, having it be the next board of selectmen meeting, I think might not be, give these gentlemen some time to get some more information.
It would just be an update, two weeks, but...
I guess, I'm looking at the motion itself, and it's, the RFP process is separate, in a sense, to this motion. Of course, it's connected, but I, I guess, the only reason that I would be willing to vote to postpone this is because this motion says it's a one-year extension, and it's not a month to month. And what Rich is saying, Mr. White is saying, is that you would work with the assistant town attorney to come up with a clarity of language, we could then see that language. That would be my interest in postponing it. The other issues are apart and parcel of this, but in terms of this specific motion, I guess my, my interest would also be, is in looking at that language, is, you know, certainly allowing for it to extend through that time period to the end of the year. So, if we are doing a month to month, going out, you know, however the language is, I'm not the attorney, and that's, I will leave that to, to those who are. So, that would be, you know, reason to postpone it for me, as opposed to some of the other issues. So, with that said, I've moved to postpone this to our next board of selectmen meeting, so that we can then hopefully vote on whether we are extending this contract, and hopefully we'll have that as a month to month opportunity.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Any discussion on the motion to postpone from the board? Any discussion from the public on the motion to postpone? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Gentlemen, thank you. Moving forward with our agenda. Next up, we've had a resignation on the Town Facilities Commission, Mr. James Pesci of 3473 Reading Road. Moving forward, reappointments. Town Facilities Commission, Mr. Harry Ackley. Can I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I would just support Mr. Ackley. I've had the pleasure of working with him, and I think, Mike, you did, on the RTM. And so did Kristen, that's right. And he's been a great public servant, and I think he should continue in the role that he's doing, and he's, the meetings I've been at, he's always been there, and he's done a great job.
Any following?
I'm just going to say thanks to his wife as well.
I did work with Mr. Ackley, as Mr. Walsh did, on the RTM. He's also got a great reputation in town in terms of his service to the town over the years. Okay to go to the public?
Yes.
Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Mr. Ackley. Oh, he's got another one coming up here. Further on, appointments, item number nine. Cable Advisory Council. Pamela Jones has been appointed as one of our four representatives on the Cable Advisory Council. Riverfield Building Committee. We have seven members currently. I think you've got the handout with those listed in your packet. You've also got the names and party affiliations of the people on that. We currently have, and is it okay if I take these two together?
Sure.
All right. We have nominated Mr. Harry Ackley, 25 Wagon Hill Road, and Dorothy Demick, 245 Anquo Road. Both are Republicans. That would bring our board, the Riverfield Building Committee Board membership to nine We would have five Republicans, two Democrats, and two unaffiliated. So, we're in our guidelines there. This still needs to go to the RTM for approval. Any discussion?
I would, well, I've already said what I had said about Mr. Ackley, so I echo those comments again. But, Mike, as you know, I recommended Dorothy Demick. I've had the pleasure of working with her on the RTM for many years. And also, she has the added benefit of having served on a successful building committee. So, I believe she's going to be the only, if she's, if we put her on, going to be the only one who has. And I think that's a very important trait for a building committee, to at least have somebody who has the experience to be able to have sat there and thought of issues that, you know, they worked through, that's not reinventing the deal. So, I think she will be a great asset, and I highly recommend her, and I couldn't recommend her anymore. So, I really appreciate that. We appreciate you supporting her.
Ms. McCarthy-Bate?
Yes, I also have had some limited conversation, and also, she has a very impressive resume, but I do know of her past experience, and I think that is something that we were missing from the committee, and I think it will be really critical, and I hope that you will feel free to share that wisdom and experience with them. So, thank you for stepping forward to serve.
Reinforcing what both you said, I think that, you know, if you look at the committee as a whole, I think we were able to reach out, get some new people involved, which is one of the goals all along. I think we've got some great experience on the seven members that are on it, in terms of what they bring. And again, we have to start with getting new people involved, so we can have experienced members to reappoint to other committees. However, that being said, I also want to point out that both, not only having a member of the building committee, but having a member of the Town Facilities Committee is one of our goals or targets, as we look at school building committees. And Mr. Ackley and Ms. Demick give us the opportunity to fill both those targeted goals.
One other comment is that though, the first building committee meeting is happening tomorrow, and though, hope that both can attend, even though the approval process still has to go through the RTM, it would be wonderful if that's a possibility. So, we should get that information out to them. So, it's been given out, that's great.
All right. Any further discussion?
I just want to ask one question. I know the RTM had requested somebody come on, but I don't know if anybody came forward. I know that that was a problem. And I know that there's nobody on here from the Board of Education, and I'm just wondering whether, and it might not be pertinent for this conversation, but whether we should make two of them, each of those bodies have somebody appointed by their bodies to be ex officio.
Let me, let me give you an update, so we don't spend a lot of time, perhaps we can continue the discussion. Simply put, the, we bet, the RTM has been requested to have somebody step up for this, as well as other building committees that we're in the process of forming. They are still looking for candidates, in my last status. It would be, because we've kind of filled out, well, based on who we had. There may be room for more, so I was worried about the party balance, but we don't have that issue at the moment, because if we add people, that would change the mix. So, I think, party-wise, we should be okay, as long as we use some balance there. Second, with respect to the Board of Ed, I believe they're looking at appointing a liaison, which seemed to be more the sense of the body, and everybody seemed to come with that. It would be my hope to encourage building committees to treat that liaison as an ex officio member, and let them speak as a member of the body, so that there's full conversation there, which would help, I think, with the communication back and forth. With that as an update, if that's okay?
May I just share a thought, since we're having this conversation, and since we can't, I can't just call Jim and talk to him about it? I really, I actually think, maybe Ms. Demick could help us with this. Am I correct that you were a liaison when you served from the RTM?
Yes.
And you had full, not voting rights, but full conversational privileges? You sat at the table and participated in the conversation? And I happen to know, had influence, based on others, in terms of what happened and what decisions were made, though you didn't vote?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think, from what I understand historically, and looking at this issue, is that the Board of Ed has been consistently, over time, appointing liaisons who have been going and participating, and again, have voice at the table, depending on the committee and the dynamics of the group, and the individuals in the chair. Whereas the RTM had fallen away from that in more current years. So, it's, I really hope that both bodies will appoint ex officio members. And I also hope that the chair is, has clear direction tomorrow, when they begin, that those members are invited to the table, that they, as with Ms. Demick and others who served in that position, will be given full privilege to speak as ex officio members, and be equal partners in the conversation, though without voting privileges. So, just to, I'm going to put that out there and kind of get that on the record. If, you know, if the conversation evolves, I'm not opposed to having further conversation, but I also think the practical reality that we don't have a lot of people coming forward.
Okay. Any other conversation on, or discussion on the motion before us, which is...
I'd just like to, Mike, I'd just like to thank you for pursuing and, based on our conversation we had the last time, we said about expanding it, and based on a pretty much expedited basis, and staying on top of that, that we get up to the numbers that the, that other committee who had talked about building committees got to. So, I'd just like to thank you for pushing that forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations, Ms. Demick. Is there anything you'd like to say at this time? If you'd like to, you need to come up to the podium. You're not required to, but you're, it is one of the rights and privileges you have earned. Thank you very much for your time and volunteering. Just bring it in on time and under budget. And Jen, we'll get out something to Mr. Ackley, to, very good. All right, next up, Water Pollution Control Authority, a motion to appoint Sherry Stenick.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, is she here still?
No, I think she took, she took advantage. I suggested she...
She was here long enough.
I, I could not recommend Sherry more highly. Obviously, she's held higher positions in the town, but the fact that she's willing to stay on that board, a board that she did serve on as being the selectman representative for so many years, there's probably nobody more qualified after going through and dealing with the stuff she had to deal with. So, I couldn't recommend her more highly. Wish she was here for us to tell her stuff.
Yeah. There she is.
There she is.
There she is.
Wow. Well, very well said. Sherry, you'll have to watch it on TV, because that was very, very well said. And I think it is amazing, Sherry is, that just shows what a town servant she is, and I don't mean that, I mean that in the best of ways, actually. A true, a true leader, and that's, she's willing to serve and continue is tremendous. Thank you.
Yep. I would just add my thoughts, that not only is Sherry done a lot for the town over time in a host of different offices and positions, she actually volunteered for this. We didn't have to talk her into it. She, so I think that is great to see that she wants to continue and do that. So, thank you. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Ms. Stenick. Would you want to share any comments with us?
No, I have a meeting, so it's like 6:30.
Okay. Any thoughts, any comments from Scufford?
I like the Water Pollution Control Authority, everybody on the board is great, and it's an interesting board, and so, I have to say thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Next up, Fairfield Woods Building Committee update. To hear, consider an update from Mr. Bill Sapon regarding Fairfield Woods Middle School Renovation Project. Mr. Sapon?
I'm just here to give a quick update of where we are, and it is an appropriate point to do that. We're about ninety, maybe ninety-two percent complete on the project itself. I guess to go back to a little history, we started on the project, I think, in July of 2010, when the building committee was appointed. And one of the main considerations and a real target for us was to have classrooms available for September 1st, 2011, which was a very compressed timeframe. We met quite a bit in order to go through various proposals, different designs... We met quite a bit in order to go through various proposals, different designs, went through the funding process, went through, did a lot of work, legwork, to get through that. And finally, we actually didn't start construction until March of last year. So between March and September, we had six months, and with that six months, we put up our classroom addition, we renovated the inside of the school, so we were able to increase the size of the cafeteria, we added some classroom space, we moved boilers around, and we did, about seventy-five percent of the work was done in that short timeframe of six months. And at this point, all of those phases are essentially done. There's a few punchless items on phases one, two, and three. And since January, we've been basically concentrating on the last two phases, which are the auditorium and the auxiliary gym and OTPT area, which have been moving along, actually, without too much difficulty. And by the end of this month, essentially, the auditorium will be ready for use. We're looking to try and get our temporary CO April 1st, and the OTPT area should follow within the next week or so, so that, the plan is hopefully, that they'll be using the auditorium at the end of April for their, their first plate production, which, and so far, everything looks good, so I think we'll be able to do that. In terms of budget, we're towards the end, and it's getting crunch time. There's things that we may have to change, drop off, and other things we may have to juggle in order to make our budget, but everybody on the committee is committed to staying within our budget, and we're going to work to try and achieve that. And that's, that's where we are. Of course...
I've got to, I've got to ask the 600-pound...
Okay. I was waiting.
You were going to.
How's the copper roof?
Yeah.
And can you give us enough back? And again, because you're on Fairfield, I think there've been a lot of questions in the committee.
No, no, I understand.
Can you take time to fill us in on...
Sure.
...the rationale for that, and why that made sense to the committee, so that we can all know that would be great.
Right. And in preparation for this meeting, I've been working on an actual report that I could post on our website, which would give some of the facts and information on that. But until it's vetted by the full committee, you know, it's still in draft form, but at least it allowed me to get most of, most of what we had together. There was a couple of things that were important in picking the copper for the siding and the roof. For the siding, one of, we were looking at a couple of different substances. We're looking at brick versus painted aluminum versus the copper. And what it turned out was that the painted aluminum has a lifetime that's approximately 25 years, and you do have to paint it and maintain it. And one of the advantages of copper is it's, it just stays bare. You never have to finish it, you never have to seal it, you never have to touch it at all. In fact, with weathering, it develops an oxide, which is corrosion resistant, and basically, it can last a hundred years. So once installed, it should be in and done. If any dings or nicks occur, it'll just re-oxidize. And the way at patinas, at patinas, in a way where scratches and dents, basically, they just disappear into the surface. Whereas if you see some of these aluminum sidings, and they get dented, and there was some on the school, you know, once it's dented, what are you going to do? You're not going to replace it. It's, it's always going to be there, a little bent, a little dented, does not look good. And we're hoping that the siding will, will perform really well in the school. And as part of the cost comparison between the two, I think that the siding, some of the sheet siding was around $40 a square foot, roughly. Whereas if you were doing a brick wall, it was on the order of thirty, thirty-five percent. Plus, you'd have to, about...
Thirty, thirty-five dollars.
Thirty to thirty-five dollars per square foot. And with the brick, some of the considerations were the increased weight, you need more structural steel, you need more backing, you have maintenance issues, brick is a porous material, over time, it'll start absorbing water and effervescent. You will have to re-point. And all of those maintenance items, which I hate to say, typically, we don't do. We, we let things go too far, and then we have problems with them. We hopefully won't have with the copper siding that we've installed. And with that also is the timing factor, because with the additional steel and the additional supports and the brickwork, the time to, to build that would have taken longer than simply putting up the sheet, because it, it's fabricated on site and it goes on really quickly. It's a lot faster to put up than brick, and so particularly with the classroom addition, where we had a really tight timeframe, we needed to make sure that we were going to hit our targets. And, and in that trade-off to, in order to make our schedule, of course, you have to spend more money on some things in order to make sure you're going to be there. And those were some of the trade-offs we had. We paid probably more for labor because of that, and some material choices were quicker to construct and to get us on the ground and running by the time we needed to. So the other copper panels are composite, and I have a sample here, if you want to look at it. It's much thinner copper. It's backed with insulation and a solid vacuum layer. And again, the, the advantage to this material, besides the fact that, you know, you install it and you forget about it, it's going to be there forever, and you never have to touch it, is that it comes in panels that you can just bolt on and be done. So once the, the structural steel is up and the frame's on, it's, just plug them in, and it goes pretty quickly. And again, you don't have the, the loads and the, that you have to do with, if you're going to support brick, particularly on a two-story structure, you've got, that's a lot of weight that you'd have to support, and a lot of extra structure that we need. So this material has been used many times, and we expect it to perform really well in a building. And given the timeframe that we had, we thought it was a good choice. And one other thing I would point out is that this, this was not done in a vacuum. We, again, we had a tight timeframe, but we did take the time to go over the, the choice of material over a number of meetings. I think between May, June, July, August of 2010, we looked at the different materials. The architect came in and gave us presentations, and we looked at flyarounds of the building, what the different materials would look like on it. And we reviewed him, what was the best material for what we had, and the decision was made to go with the copper. And it was, in all of our materials, I mean, we didn't emphasize that, and, and the reason is that that was the critical point that we were trying to address. I mean, our goal is not to build a statue or something pretty. Our goal was to put classrooms in and make sure we had the money for the classrooms we needed, the auxiliary gym, the cafeteria, and the auditorium. And so all the discussion we had with most bodies centered on the functionality of the building. And then at TP&amp;Z, we had issues with zoning, because we had to do a zoning change in order to meet the, the bulk volume of the building. So a lot of the attention was on that. We spent time on the building and landscaping more than this, but it was always, it was always part of the structure. I do have copies of a couple of the drawings that we had with TP&amp;Z, and it shows the copper sheeting on the building, and it also showed the copper panels. So the drawings were always there, they were reviewed by, and approved by us as a building committee, the Board of Ed had to approve them, Bureau of School Facilities in Hartford, TP&amp;Z had full copies. And of course, all the drawings and specifications were reviewed by the building department and all the different departments in town as well. So the drawings were here, and everybody had access. It just wasn't the, the thing that people wanted to talk about when we were going through all the meetings. And so that's, it was not a stealth issue, and we think it's, it's a right choice because of its, its lifetime. And I guess one other point is, it's a green material. It's not just turns green, but the fact is that the sheet material is fifty to 100% made out of recycled copper to begin with. And then even after 100 years, you can still pull it off the building and recycle it. It's one of the few building materials that you're going to get payback on when you take it off the building. Certainly, you don't get that with the membrane roofing systems, which are common in the town.
Quick question in terms of, given it's copper, given it's, is this the side, the thickness of the panel, or...
Yeah, that's exactly the, the thickness of the square panels that are on the side of the building.
And given some of our more publicized HVAC issues, how's this for insulation?
There's an insulation layer right in there, and then behind that, there's also other insulation, and plus, you also have an air pocket. So insulation-wise, it does meet all, meet or exceed what our requirements are. There's no issue of it being less insulation. As a matter of fact, you have plenty of insulation and less support, so the insulation probably covers more than you would if you had more structural steel in the middle, which could be a heat channel that did affect insulation character.
All right. And without giving away any security issues, since we've had some well-publicized removals of copper from town facilities, how is that going to be handled, or how, how secure is this?
Well, the school system, the school itself does have video monitoring, both of inside and outside, so it's, you know, schools are common areas for vandalism, so it's not unusual for them to have security systems available there, which should cover it. Those panels are not removable from the, from the building. You'd really have to have, be a professional, that's pretty solid material, and it's bolted firmly in, and you can't access the screws, so it's not likely that's, that's going to be a problem. Most of the sheet material is high up. It's not down where people would access it. Only these panels would be, and they, they should be fairly safe.
Okay. Any questions?
A follow-up about the copper, and I, you know...
Sure.
First of all, thank you for all the work that you've done on this building, and with the compressed timeline, and to all of the building committee members who are here and not here. You've done a tremendous amount of work and managed a lot of pieces. So I hate to ask about the copper, and I, I am, more because, of course, that's what happens in a lot of our building projects. We end up having a lot of great successes, but we focus on some of those things that are misunderstood. So in an effort to be sure that I understood what you were saying, when you talked about looking at the brick versus the copper, the more, you talked about the issues of needing more structure and all that. You also talked about the pricing, the thirty to thirty-five dollars a square foot versus forty dollars a square foot for this material?
Not for this material, no. This material is more expensive. That's, that was more on the order of seventy dollars a square foot.
Okay.
So it's significantly more expensive than the brick. But we got a rough estimate of somewhere around thirteen or fourteen dollars a square foot would be the additional structural material that you would meet. So you've got to bump it up by that. And then it's difficult to put a price on time and constructibility on top of that. So you've got those other factors. And maintenance is a consideration, too.
So is that, that material and the roofing material, what's the difference in cost between the two of them?
The roofing material and the other sheet siding is literally just a sheet of copper. It's roll-formed on site, and it's in long sheets, so it's not penetrated. I believe it's like 14-gauge, and it's got overlapping joints, so it should be pretty well sealed. And it's, it's because it's lightweight, of course, the roof itself had a lot less structure on it as well. It sheds snow and water very easily, so you don't have to worry so much about buildups on it as well. But it is just plain copper underneath it. There'll be, there's the insulation before the support structure.
And the pricing, I would imagine, would be different?
Yeah, the pricing for the sheet was around forty dollars a square foot.
Okay.
So for the, when you compare it to the brick, it does compare favorably, because with the additional structure, you do have some savings in it, thirty, thirty-five versus forty. With the roofing, I guess you'd be going against membrane roof for the most part. And, you know, the last estimates I've seen around town are like thirty-five dollars a square foot or so, to forty dollars on the membrane roofs. But they'd only have a life of like 25 years, and, you know, there are some difficulties with those, which you shouldn't have with the copper. Plus, with our, the way the auditorium is structured, and it needed to be that way in order to have height for lights at one end, so we have that sloping surface. That was really the best material to use. A membrane would have looked terrible. Sheet galvanized or other materials would not have looked as well, or would have required more maintenance. So we're hoping that that, the roofing system will really be a long-term value.
That's, that was actually my last, and then I'll defer, but my last question, because we've had a lot of conversations about roofing roofs around town lately. So is, in terms of a warranty or roof maintenance, what, what's the...
Well, essentially, there is no roof maintenance on this, there shouldn't be any. It's going to be the same as I described it earlier. I mean, it just naturally weathers, the corrosion resistance will come up. It's, it's got overlapping joints, and they're, they're all sealed according to spec, and there's splashing all around. So, and you shouldn't have the issues which sometimes you have with membranes, which are soft, and you could just walk on it and create a hole, or pinhole somewhere, and you have issues. You shouldn't have that with, with the copper. Actually, there should be no real reason to be going up there. In any case, there's no mechanicals up there, as there are in some of our other roofs around town. So nobody's going to be cutting holes and patching, and the slope is good, so everything should shed. We shouldn't have the same kind of issues there, certainly that they're having at the others. And you won't have the 25-year life like you're having with many schools now that are at 30 years, and they're in terrible shape, and we could, copper roofs like this type have been in service for 100 years without problems, so.
Do we have a warranty on it as well, or is that...
I'm sure we do have a warranty, but I don't, I don't have the information specifically on what that would be. But we got warranties on everything that we've put into the whole structure, the roofs, and the air conditioners and everything else, and that's part of our closing process, to pull all the paperwork together and get it organized. You have to pull that with the other ones.
Mr. Walsh?
Sure. And I will also want to thank you, Mr. Stone, and your group for doing this project, and it was very difficult, kind of building project. So I want to thank you for all the time you've invested. Question, I, I heard you say about that, you know, you guys talked about the, the copper, and that it was discussed, you said the Board of Ed got upset plans on it, and showed the copper.
Sure.
What, when questions first started coming in to me and others I've talked to, both on the RTM and things like that, and when I was on those boards, we approved this, was there was never copper shown on any of those plans. And the question that comes up is, to what degree does a building committee have to change what the look of a building is that we approved? Because we approved, we looked at architectural plans, and we're sold a bill of goods, basically. We're told, and, for example, it's like McKinley. McKinley, when we looked at it, we, and I was on the RTM then, we looked at McKinley, and it was a brick-built, and we knew what it was going to look like, and that's what it came out to look like. When I was on the RTM and we approved Burr Elementary School, we knew it was a completely different design. And there's arguments to be made that that wasn't the best design, and there's been problems, but we all knew that that was going to be windows. But I think anybody would start asking questions, I guess, if, when something's built, it starts to look different than what, you know, if I, if I had approved something, what I approved was different than what ended up going in. Because I would anticipate that all the RTM members are supposed to go to every building committee meeting and raise an objection to that. So can you comment?
Sure. No, I, I think it's a function of the process, unfortunately. I mean, the thing that you have to recall is that what you looked at, what the Board of Finance looked at, and what the RTM looked at, were our proposals for the different configurations of the building that we were planning to build. There were several different options they were looking at, A, B, C, and D. You made the call that this, this was option D, or D1, it was a subset. And option D1 did look like this, generally. But the thing was, at that point, we didn't know what it is we were going to actually have approval for. We wanted option D, but we hadn't done any detailed design drawings. Everything was preliminary and conceptual estimate. That's just the way the process works. We were assigned to come up with a plan for classrooms, et cetera. We made a recommendation for what it is that we needed in terms of classrooms, whatever, and compared to different options. We didn't actually get into the details of the design and the decisions on the materials until after the funding was approved, and after the Board of School Facilities approved what we submitted up there in terms of drawings. We didn't get down to the details and nitty-gritty of that until after all of those approvals were done. So once you're at that point, the only thing we needed for approvals at that point was Board of Education and TP&amp;Z. There wasn't a, another approval step. We were still within our funding that was requested, we're still within the same parameters of what we were supposed to build, but we never submitted to you or the RTM or Board of Finance a bill of materials in terms of, well, we're going to use copper for this or in this and that, because we hadn't had, we didn't decide that yet. It was not completed at that point. It was a conceptual estimate at that point, and that's just a function of the process.
So I guess what you're saying is that, that if that became your purview and your committee's purview...
Right. That was our charge to do that.
To make that decision. So I guess, I guess what you're also saying is that we, if those other bodies in the future, say, Riverfield, want to have a say, and they don't want it to look like copper, or say Riverfield, want to have a say and they don't want it to look like copper or they don't want it given to a building committee to make that decision, then at the time we do the funding, we're going to have to start putting conditions on that or?
Well, the thing is you can't because of the way this, the way the cycle works, it's a complicated process, but we have to have approval on funding before we can do the details of the design to find out what it is that we're going to actually be building.
But I guess we could tell you in advance the materials that we wanted to use and you could put it out to bid like that.
Yeah, but then, the thing is that's, you really, you really can't do that. What we did, we did have ex officio Board of Ed person, we had actually someone from the Board of Finance who was tasked to work with us and.
Yeah, I know there was.
We had an RTM member.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, once we had our, our charge and we had our budget and we had our funding for what it is we're going to build, all the details of the things that you're going to build is generally the purview of the building committee. They do it after weighing and balancing. That's, that's what our task is, is to come up with what it is that we need to build.
The question comes up though, is as those bodies, this body, the Board of Finance and the RTM are voting on it and it's no different than building a house. And if I'm the funding operation of building my house, do I have some say into what it looks like?
Well.
I mean, shouldn't that be the case? I mean, shouldn't there be, as you go through the approval processes, which are open processes?
Understood, but at some point, you're delegating this to a body of volunteers who are knowledgeable on the subject matter that you hopefully will have to trust to make the best decision in the, in the interest of the town, which is what we are. We all swore our oath to serve. We're all town residents. We all care about the dollars that are spent, absolutely. But we want to make sure we're getting value for our dollar, not just paying for the lowest possible cost for things. You have to look at for the long term. That building's going to be there 50 to 100 years. I mean, and you want to think of it that way as, you know, you're investing now that hopefully you won't have to spend a lot of money later. We keep that in mind when we're doing it. We want to keep in budget and deliver to the town a product that will not only function well, but will, you know, look good and it's important that it does.
And be easy to maintain, which I.
Maintenance is a key factor. You know, after serving in a town facilities commission for several years, it's, it's just really unfortunate, but to find money in the budgets to do maintenance, let alone capital projects is very difficult. And so, a lot of things get set aside which wind up costing us more money later when we actually get around to them. You know, building solid and putting in a good structure that's going to last, I think, is, has got to be taken into consideration, knowing that it may not be maintained as well as it should and hopefully it'll, it'll still last.
So, would you then, based on this analysis, think that we're going to start seeing a lot of buildings around town made of copper? Because based on your analysis on the cost of it, if it's in the trends, it's in the costing of it, it would seem that, based on that, that we're going to start seeing a lot of other structures around town that are, that are based in copper and have copper roofs and whatever.
Well.
I guess that's the question.
When we did select the copper, I mean, it hadn't been the craze that it became in the last year or so when copper really went up in cost. We had already contracted and budgeted for it, so it wasn't, the timing was different from when we actually committed to that versus when it actually was installed. So, you know, we kind of were ahead of the curve on where the copper craze came up, which may die down, I don't know. But you will see more copper, I think, because it is good material and you do see it on a lot of different buildings around in different areas. Maybe not like what we did, but it was a function of the design that we had and what we needed in order to fit best with the design of the area, so.
I have to say, driving by, I cannot recall seeing another copper roof and both from people who have a lot of money and others who are trying to save money in maintenance costs. I've just not seen a copper roof used very much in any type of building. Can I try to trust what you're saying is correct? I just don't know the reason why that I'm not seeing that. Is there a reason why I'm not seeing that?
Well, I think, like I said, now the, I think during the eighties is when copper started coming back into being roofing and paneling and through the eighties and into the nineties, you saw some as well. It goes up and down in popularity depending on, you know, what current trends are, but you know, I'm no expert on copper. I can't say that I am. All I know is that we needed to pick a material that was going to work for the structure and we talked about it, we had concerns about it. For example, the shiny look is horrible. Nobody liked the shiny work, but it would have cost more for us to get like a dulled down one, so natural weathering is the way to go. In our opinion, it was the best choice. Would somebody else choose something differently? I don't know, but we had to, we had to make decisions on our way to getting the project done on time and that was one we made and I still think for the long term, it should be the right choice.
These, this is not what's being used on the roof, right?
No.
You were choosing sheet.
It's a sheet, yeah.
In the areas, I mean, you explained that this stuff is bolted or screwed in somehow and it's hard to get off.
Right.
The sheet copper, how hard is that to remove if somebody had a snip pair of, you know, whatever and you started pulling it?
Now, like I say, all of that sheet material is pretty high up, so they'd have to use ladders or other things just to get to it before they could attack it and try and get something out of it and, you know, I guess where there's a will, there's a way. I can't say that somebody, you know, wouldn't be daring enough to do it. I can't guarantee that, but you know, it's, they have security systems in place that prevent handling some of different kinds. I would hope that that should be sufficient.
As Mr. Tetrom and alluded to, I mean, there's notable instances, not just with homeowners, but we have our own Burr Mansion, which is like lit up like a Christmas tree at night and it took a while to figure out that all of our downspouts were, were removed. Someone was raising it up even in the middle of darkness with lights on to write on old post row.
Well, I can guarantee you, our panels aren't on the same way roofing, a gutter would be put on the side. Downspouts, you could rip them off just with your bare hands. You don't have to do anything. They'd only have little wood screws holding them in, so. They, they would pop out pretty easily. That's not going to be the case with this because all the joints are, are sealed. There's no real edge you can like just grab onto and try and cut through. You'd have to, you'd have to really work at it. So, I'm not so sure how easy it would be. And like I say, the joints are overlapped, so anything underneath that, they can't get at those, those fasteners that are underneath the joints.
And another area getting past the copper, the change orders that you have. I was at a TFC meeting and I just missed you. Three weeks ago, two or three weeks ago?
Right.
And there was representations made there that you had said that the total amount of all the change orders, if they were added up, would exceed the amount of your budget. Is that the case?
There was, there's a list of potential change orders. What they do is everything that comes up, they probably put a cost on what it might cost if that was there. And if we did everything on that and everything did go through, yes, we would be over budget, but we're not going to do everything that's on that list. We're calling that back because that's our working list on how we figure out how to cut back where we want to be.
So, those change orders are not signed change orders?
No.
We haven't agreed?
We haven't approved.
Okay, okay. Now, I guess that was.
They're unapproved potential change orders. Some things have been done which we will pay for, once we review it and vet it to make sure it's right. Other things we're not going to pay for, you know, we're not going to do. And that's how we're going to try and get our, our budget. So, right now, our big goal is managing the change order process.
And what extent does the administration of the school or the administration of that specific school, whether it be the Board of Ed, the central administration, or the school get involved in requesting these change orders?
Very few. I mean, change orders are more site issues than they are questions from administrators. We do respond if there's a potential problem or some issue that needs to be addressed. We have weekly owners' meetings, usually Principal Greg Hatzis will be there. I try to be there for most of them. If he has a particular issue with, you know, something that the lock doesn't work on the door or windows not here, there's little issues, they might come up, but the change orders we're looking at are related to the construction and they have nothing to do with the administration. They're basically between the architect, engineer, contractor, and us. That's the four parties that are involved with the change orders. I can't think of anything in particular that would have come from administration.
Okay. So, there's been no request by any of the administration, whether central administration or the administration at the school for changes that they want that would cost the town more money to build this building?
Nothing that I can recall in particular. We did do something with, no, that wasn't from the administration. I really can't think of anything, nothing specifically from administration, no.
But as you sit here today, you believe you'll still be on budget based on being 90%, 80, somewhere between 80 and 90% done?
That's our goal.
Be over.
We're working for it, yeah. I can't guarantee it 100%, but that's what we're working for. Again, it's, it's managing what we've got and.
In regards to your contingency, do you manage that contingency based on the change orders that you have already? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, of course. Well, we manage all of the money, not just the contingency funds. I mean, there's unexpended funds in some of the soft costs which you reallocate towards certain change orders. We had initially built in some allowances for some things where we thought we might have some issues come up, so we had some allowance money as put aside as well as unexpended soft cost money as well as contingencies, both the owner's contingency, there's a contracted contingency and there was originally a architect contingency. So, you consume all those and they go through time. So, but we manage, every dollar is managed, not just the contingency.
Was there any major site issue that came up that would, came into your contingency?
Not, not, well, yeah, there was one particular issue that would chew up a bit and that was a couple of them. One was the fire system. Originally, there was an existing fire panel which served the alarms and smokes in the building and we put in a new panel for the new additions and other areas. And somehow, over the summer, when we went to restart up that system, the existing board, boards in the existing system, a couple of them were burnt out. And at that point, we found out that system was obsolete and you could not get replacements for those boards. So, that necessitated us actually putting all of the entire building's smoke detectors and fire alarms on our new panel. And that also required us to replace every smoke detector in the entire school, which was unexpected and a site issue. If we had known that panel was that bad to begin with, maybe we would have integrated that, but we didn't. Boards in one of those panels just pulling up, putting another one in. To say that, oh, the last one they got, they got it eBay somewhere, at least they could find it, was a little bit of a shock to us, so that cost quite a bit of money. I think we spent like $130,000 just addressing that one issue. We didn't hit any particular ledge. We didn't have any site issues on that. I don't recall anything else that was all that substantial.
Kristin, did you have some questions?
Well, I do. I also am just aware of time and I don't know if there's another meeting coming in here. I'm happy to defer some of mine, but I just have one comment that I would like to make is that, and I feel this way about all of our school-town projects, that when this is complete and the building is done and there's a CO, I'd love to see there be a community open house where the members of the community, the taxpayers, the citizens can come in and actually see the facility and see what they have paid for for our community. So, it's something, if you would pass that on to.
Yeah, that would be something that the principal or Board of Ed would have to take up, but the auditorium is going to be available for public use of course, once that's out. We're hoping that the library and others will take advantage of it should.
Given, given the time on the agenda, do you wonder if I can just postpone back or we've pretty much done with our questions?
I, I'm personally dealing with my questions.
Okay. Are you okay?
Yep.
All right. Mr. Smolny, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For coming in and taking the time to step aside. Looking at the agenda going.
I'm sure you don't like.
Is that good for a roof? Maybe.
Fifty-seven bucks.
We can look at moving through the rest of this, I think, pretty quick. With your permission, I'd move to postpone the discussion of the road naming process. I'm just going to keep that in front of us and we do need to name, that's the Metro Center Road.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on postponing that to the next meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Tax collector refunds, can I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, we can have a motion to approve. There's one that I think we both figured out that there's a slight miscalculation that I think we're going to send back, but.
Do we need to postpone all of those?
No. I think we should approve all of them except for the one, which if you want for the record is, Kristin's got the same calculation. It's the.
Circles right there. It's on that top sheet.
It's the one with, there's one for ALC Leasing Limited. It's 2010-240420. Other than that one, we are, we will make a motion to approve everyone except that one.
Okay. Motion to approve the refunds is listed with the exception?
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Hearing, Act on Aid Communications, none before us. Any other businesses come before us at this meeting? None before us. We do have a private executive session. My thought is that, Mary, can we, I'm looking at the best way to do that. That's the last item on the agenda. We can actually move to another room, I'm thinking, and do just the private executive session.
That sounds great.
And then.
The council here, so.
Come back out and, Mary, is that okay if we do that? All right, then, can I have a motion to go into private executive session in a, in the second floor conference room of this hall?
Some of.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And we free this room up.